Okay, now that I got my phone, me will come to order please. First thing is a public comment. Anybody who wants to speak, raise your hand, I'll identify you. Welcome to the podium, three minutes. Please.
I've been...
Name and address? Even though we know, we gotta do it legally.
It used to be over there. Okay, Sharon Meeker, 203 Wildly Falls Road. And I've been one of the towns' representatives to the Lamprey River Advisory Committee for many years. And now, we took advantage of a grant that was available to us to compile 20 years of our work, so that you all can know what we've been doing, besides Justin Lee, and of course, in Lee. And we have, we were designated a Wild and Scenic River, at least part of it, in 1996. And we always call it the lower half. It's really the part that in 1996 didn't include Epping. It was just Durham and Lee, and I think Newmarket. And then later, we managed to get Epping in when we helped them fix their sewage treatment plant a little bit. So we're four towns in the Wild and Scenic River Partnership, which is a federal program. And then in 2011, we became, the whole river came under the offices of the State River Protection Program. It's now River and Lakes Protection Program. And so we're very glad about that. And it's kind of a unique partnership up here in the New England States, because throughout the country, there are wild and scenic rivers, but they're usually very large ones, usually running mostly through government land. And we up here have rivers that are running largely through private land. And so we needed a different program. So we have what we call the River Partnership Program. And we've, just a brief talk about what we have done in the last 20 years. And then I have a report for you, which I hope you'll pass on to other departments. And I don't know, the expense of copying color is an awful lot. So we weren't able to make a lot of copies. But we have set up a website, the easiest one in the world, it's lampreyriver.org. And you'll get all that's going on with us. Right now, we're beginning to redo it, revamp it, because it's been up for quite a while. We take our displays and conversation with individuals, really, is what it is, to all the fairs and things now, in the 14 towns, all that we can get to. And we come to Lee every year. We have a curriculum that was written by teachers and me in the 1970s. And it's been used just about ever since by the Massway School, and then other schools rather intermittently. It's a science, social studies curriculum. And this year, we took, I don't know, there were over 100 kids from Massway School on a field trip, which might be my last field trip. But anyway, they investigated the water environment and didn't fall in, so we did well. Our star, the star of our program has always been land conservation, land protection. We've worked many times with various towns in the four-town area, because this is a federal, federal money that we have for that. We've worked with the town of Lee and several easements that I'm sure you're aware of. We also do project review. If there's a project proposed within a mile and a half of either side of the Lamprey River, we review that project. And our reviews are listened to, because we're very lucky. We have a former engineer in charge of the committee. And he does very great reports. We have a small committee, but he really does it. And we have recreation committee, a historic, an archaeological committee. And we're hoping to do something about Wildly Falls before I leave, because that is a very historic place. And we need to recognize its contribution to, really, to New Hampshire history. That was a focal point of industry at one time. We also work with water quality. And we have refined a lot of the statistics that the state has. And we are just about ready to be able to present it to the towns. It makes it a lot easier to look at. And you know, we've done a lot of other things, I don't need to keep talking about it. But this, I have only one copy of this. This is the annual, annual report for 2017. And I think that it's in the town, yeah, the town records. And, but I do have one copy. And then the other thing that I have here is a couple of copies about the whole Wild and Scenic Partnership Rivers. I'll give you one shot. Oh, sorry. What did I do?
That's okay.
Don't worry about it, you're all right.
All right. Then I have one copy for each of you. And I'll rely on you to give it to whatever department you look at it, okay? That you think needs it. Thank you. And I just wanted to say that we have two publications. One is the historic view of the river. And it's a story that Dave Allen wrote. And we took it and had it edited and, I don't know. We use it with fourth graders and fifth graders when we talk about the river. And then the newest thing is Chuck and DeeDee's Lamprey River Adventure. And Chuck and DeeDee are Chickadees, of course. And they're flying upriver from where the river joins Great Bay. And it's very attractive. And I'm not selling it or anything, but it is for sale if you're interested. And we do have a few copies left. So I can't really give you guys one, but, and you already have this. But if you want it, give me a call, and I'll get it for you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me say, well, thank you for all the work that you do and your committee. It's well appreciated. Is there a link that we could put in the inquiry with these? Can we put together maybe just a summary of what Sharon just said, and just put a few links together? And we'll get it on the inquiry, so at least they know that these are available, they can see it that way.
Great.
And maybe just a little summary? Maybe you can work with town administrator, put a paragraph together?
Sure.
Okay? I appreciate that. Comments, questions?
Good read?
Yes, it is good read. It's nice, it's very nice. Okay, next item, a Bill Luke Building Inspector. The ADA issues. Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
John Tappan, 187 Stepping Stones Road. For a long time, I've seen the ADA standards as a requirement that's handed down to us from the federal government. Because I understood the need, and I thought it was justified, but still, it was a requirement handed down. Our town has made some accommodations to make its buildings accessible. And if requested, will move meetings and programs to provide access. But it occurred to me that sometimes the need may not be voiced. I thought of a person who has experience or knowledge that might be valuable to a board or commission or committee, and they would like to help. But if they find out that that group normally meets in a place that's not accessible to them, do they want to be the new person who forces that group to permanently move their meeting place? If the personal connections are not already made, then they may not want to be in that position. I want all of our town functions to be open to all who are eligible. Because I'm not expecting to see a wheelchair lift on the road grader. But I am expecting that we're working toward a time when all committees, boards, and commissions meet in a place that is accessible. If someone parks a van in a, parks in a van-accessible space, maneuvers their wheelchair up a ramp, takes the elevator to the second floor meeting, then their experience is as close to mine as is possible. But if they have to call ahead to request a change of venue, then their experience is very different from mine. While the ADA does not require us to make structural changes where there are other solutions feasible, it's often the structural changes that allow all participants to participate as equally as possible. I see the ADA standards as a guide that shows us how to be considerate neighbors.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay. Thank you. Bill?
Good evening, everybody.
Thanks.
I was asked to review a list of renovations and ADA compliance items for the Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, the library, and the museum. And I'm working off of this form, everybody's familiar with that. First, looking at this, I noticed that some of these repair costs are fairly overinflated. And so in noticing that, that seemed to be my first course of action, is to, to address the costs. And last week, John Tappan came and spoke to me about the town's liability. And so looking at it from that angle, we certainly, as you pointed out, there are some limitations to some of the buildings in those areas. The, this, this list, some are ADA compliance. Straight allowing accessibility to these buildings should be our utmost concern. Some of the things on the list are a wish list of renovations for those buildings, and not necessarily ADA compliant items. So I don't really have a presentation performed or put together tonight. But I'm willing to go through this and answer any questions you guys may have on the major concerns. I think one major concern might be the ramp into the Town Hall and the accessibility of that. We have, I believe we have one, one taxpayer that comes twice a year to pay taxes and accesses that ramp. And they do access it, but it's, it's limited. It doesn't have the proper clearances. And it can be, it can be upgraded to meet the letter of the law. We have a historic building, and existing buildings are given some leeway on the ADA. Municipalities with limited expenses aren't expected to be up to the letter of the law as if we had just built it brand-new. So in reconfiguring an existing ramp, there are things that can be done to make this better conform with the ADA standards. At the top of, and the ramp that I'm talking about is the Town Hall. And this picture here shows the door, the entrance to that Town Hall. And what's needed is a 60-inch turning radius to maneuver. And we have the 60 inches in the concrete, but we don't have the 60 inches in this rail on this side. And so speaking with Randy Stevens, he was in agreement that this rail could be mounted, moved off that concrete, and remounted. Like, the rail on this side is mounted to the side of the concrete, but this rail is mounted on the top. So it takes up a few, about four inches of space on that side. It would meet ADA clearances 18 inches to the, on the latch side of that door if that railing is moved off. One, one thing that John and I talked about, this doesn't conform to ADA because it doesn't have a landing from the threshold. A landing at the bottom of the ramp, and then a landing at the turn, and then a landing before you go in the door, is how the letter of the law reads. And with a few minor adjustments, I think this was slated as a $20,000 to $25,000 repair. And in talking with Randy, if, if something in the order of $5,000 was devoted to this ramp, then we could make it in compliance. And that would be, as John pointed out in our conversation last week, make the landing from the threshold to the backside of the turn, so that that was all one level. And then have the ramp come up to that. So the ramp would be extended. That would raise this platform, this landing, up about 15 inches. And so we would need about a 15-foot ramp. And that would bring us up to the door, the front of the door and the tool shed. So it can be done, but certainly not for the money stated here. And Randy, Randy thought that moving the rail and installing an automatic door opener was a great solution, which would allow a disabled person to come up to the ramp, hit the door opener, and then be able to make the final turn in. So it's, it's a very doable repair on that. And the second one is provide automatic door opener. Replace door knobs with levers. On that door, it is a lever, because it's easier to grab a lever. You don't even need to clench a fish, you can just sometimes get your arm in a lever or hit it with your elbow. So going through this, there are, there are several items that, I'm not sure of the conversation that led up to this list, but providing stairs from the basement to the second floor of that building. First of all, this is not a basement now, is there?
Right.
So that, in this, he also had providing and digging out a basement. So I would assume that that's a wish list for that building, but not necessarily needed for ADA compliance. There are small things. Remove and locate payment drop box, so that people could access it better. The front vestibule, to provide a proper landing for egress as the second form of egress in that building. That is also a good idea. And then, as I go through this, certainly, other ramps. The ramp to the museum is quite steep and not, not in compliance. And as Randy and I talked, obviously, he knows Michelle. Michelle's situation in the library is that the, the, gosh, what do they call them? Rows or catalogs, they don't provide enough. And in this, I believe he had just a zero figure on that, just reconfiguring the rows, so that when a person came through there, they had 36 inches of clear width to negotiate those aisles. Other items, recommended repairs on the annex. All of those do seem to be, you know, if, if that was going to be a building that was kept for the next 15 to 20 years, then those seem like adequate repairs. And fire alarm, orange droves, exterior emergency lights. I have, I mean, nothing but agreeance with that. Providing tactile exit signs at exits, modifying existing signs. Those are all great. But the things that I, I couldn't understand was the three-story elevator had a cost of $90,000. That building, elevators are required when there's a 3,000 square foot of space on that second floor to access. So the ADA is written so that if there's less than 3,000 square feet, and somebody, somebody had an office up there that needed to do business, then if they were in, if they were willing to come down and do business on the first floor, if somebody with disability showed up, then that's what the ADA is looking for. The ADA is not saying that every single building needs to be retrofitted. It's saying that Americans with disabilities need to have access to those services. Sometimes those services come up to them. Not always can they gain access in older historic buildings. So this is, this is a very, a very involved list. And I couldn't agree that everything on this is, is a requirement. Would you like me to go through the list? How would you like to discuss?
Actually, what I'd like to do at this point, in my opinion, first of all, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Welcome.
Even though we're having consideration for making modifications of these buildings, we don't know if it's going to pass muster in the legislative body anyway. So I feel that we probably should move forward on some of these things. My opinion at this time, then I'll walk up to the other two gentlemen, is that you provide a priority listing of what you think needs to be done, considering the areas that are most used by the public and the staff.
And I sort of have that in my head.
I figured you did at this point. To meet minimum requirements. I mean, we're not looking at erasching, as you said before, but at least the sign movements and moving down the automatic door opener, and things that you think can be done. And provide a, somehow work on a budget that you can present to the board.
Okay.
Even though I'd like to say, let's hold off in case we, all these modifications get done. But right now, we need to deal with the president.
Just put it on paper.
Yeah, that's my thought. Gentlemen?
No, I think that's right. I think if you inspect these buildings through the eye of...
A user.
Yeah, of a user. And say, these are things that we, we need to do to be compliant, or one, to, you know, to provide access. And, and put an estimate there, and come back and say, here's, here's what I think we need to do. It's in the best interest of the compliance and the public. And, and put a dollar figure and estimate there, and then let's, let's, let's press on, let's get it done.
Okay.
Scott?
Thank you.
Okay. Can you work something out with the town administration? Is there an area in the budget that we might be the start of?
I would assume that we would take it out of the town building and cover a reserve fund.
Okay. Do you have gut estimate right now? I'm not going to put you on the spot, what you thinking?
No, I, to be honest, I haven't had time to go through every, every line item. So once, once I have gone through it, then... But these, these numbers frightened me when it first, obviously.
They frighten me too, so we're both frightened together.
I'm guessing that the biggest dollars are in the ramps, right? What is it, one inch, one inch per inch, or one inch per foot, or whatever it is?
Yeah, one inch of height per 12 inches of ramp. So, yeah, the, and when you look at the museum ramp, it's almost a ski slope. You know, like, a person with a, with, you know, most, most Americans with disability, they're in power chairs. But certainly, a person in a manual wheelchair would have a much tougher time negotiating these buildings.
I do remember in town, there is a button, right, the access button?
Yeah.
But is there one in the annex? A bell buzzer or anything? Yeah, but like you said, I've dealt with ADA issues and other work that I've done. And like you said, as long as there's a contact somewhere, if you can't get through the doors, a button, a push-on comes and helps you get through the door itself, so.
And, and in reading the ADA, they have suggestions for libraries. Some, you know, libraries are in historic buildings, they realize that they can't access every part. But if the library or the town is willing to bring some of those services to the disabled person, then that complies with the ADA. So you're still able to provide services, you're still able to provide access. But it's, it's not always physical access for them to get to the furthest part of the building.
Bill, can, in terms of, some of those things are code things. I know some things are grandfathered, some things aren't. But code and environmental things that those particular things address as well?
Yeah, heat recovery ventilation for the buildings. That's, for, for an existing building, that's not a code issue. But it's, it certainly promotes better air quality, better energy efficiency.
It's an office environmental issue.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, it's, it's certainly a wish list for, to improve all the buildings.
Thank you.
Great. You're welcome.
Our chief, sales department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple meetings ago, I was asked by the board to see if I could sell the undrivable Ford F-150. I went back to Coester's Auto Body, talked to them. They provided us with a request. They gave us the bill, is where we're at right now, for $2,136.46. And then their offer was $1,500, and they take away that bill.
Any issues? So the $2,136 is to tear it down? Is there, there supposedly parts in there too?
Correct.
And they say they can't return the parts?
Correct.
So the parts ours, or are they including that in what they're offering us?
They're including that. So the bill that was in the packet has everything listed out, how much the parts were, the labor for everything, so that's all included in that number bill.
I'm happy about it, but...
Yeah, I don't kind of stock.
And also, this says it's gasoline V3? Is it downgraded, or is that just the title? It's certainly a V8, isn't it? Or is it, what does that mean?
I don't know why that's there?
What is a 3B?
I don't know.
Is that something special?
I do not know.
Okay.
I'll look that up, Brad.
I hope that's not going to...
It's not, thank you. It's on the next page.
Yeah, it's the way Coester's described it. That's not to say it's not a mistake, but...
No. It is a V8.
Okay.
4.6 liters gasoline 3B. Therefore, I move to accept the offer from Coester's Auto Body of $3,636.46, which includes an allowance of $2,136.46 from your repair bill, and paying the town of Lee $1,500 for the purchase of the 2010 Ford F-150, fire department command vehicle.
Second.
Further conversation? All this is favorable, please, Hannah.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.
May I have a moment real quick about the plaque, please? A couple weeks ago, also, I brought up that Bill Cody is retiring from McGregor. The board asked me to look up plaque ideas, so if you just pass this around real quick. That's just the idea that I came up with for the plaque. There's the plaque. I don't have a perfect quote at this time. The plaque costs $45. When I entered in, all that information with the logo, it came up as $55, but I want, want to check on that, just to be sure.
Can we put a date or something on it as well?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Present it on, whatever.
Yeah, put a date on there, that'd be great. Look through that. Do you want the, for like a January date? Or do you want to be prior?
Are you planning on giving it to him at a particular event? Or are you just going to like drop it off and, no? Are they going to have a retirement party at or something?
I'm not sure. All I got for information was his letter to the town of Lee. So I don't know. I would assume that McGregor's going to do a party at one.
Maybe you can check with somebody besides Bill and say, are you doing something for Bill? And maybe date it at the same day or something. It would be nice to present.
Well, that is a date of his retirement, I guess.
Yeah, I guess.
I don't know what that is.
It must be in the letter, the whole date of retirement.
Yeah, it's January 1st, 2018, when the actual date.
Let's see, some, the tall skinny guy, what's his name? I don't remember his name.
Paul Skene?
He's like number two in the...
I have no idea.
I don't care. I don't remember. You could ask him.
I think if he's got, if it's in his letter, he's retiring at a date, I think this is good. Good to go?
Yeah. As long as there's a date, some date.
They got a date on there, that would be great.
Just stick my birthday on if you want.
Oh, jeez. Off the hilt, do it.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item number five, Larry Kimber, recreation community chair, kindness rock garden at Blue River Park. Welcome.
Evening.
Let's see here.
A number of meetings ago, I floated an idea that came to us for a kindness...
A number of meetings ago, I floated an idea that came to us for a kindness rock garden at Little River Park. It's kind of a national, international movement that's gone around and got a positive response from the select board at that point. So a formal proposal was brought to this recreation commission at the November meeting to put in a kindness rock garden. And that is what I'm here for tonight, is to present that to you. The recreation commission voted unanimously to move forward with this pro- with this project with your consent. The drawing is, is kind of rudimentary, but the idea of the kindness rock garden, it's about a two by, two foot by four foot garden. And there's a photograph showing a representation of what it might look like. And we'd like to put it right at the corner of the pavilion as shown on the diagram. Now, remind me again, Barry, the, some people, foot rocks there and they take them or they just? Yep, it's, um, it's, it's a very positive type program and people will write things on the rocks. Hopefully very positive things, you never know what they're going to write, but, and they might take a rock or they might put a rock down or whatever, but it helps to build community. And it's been a very positive influence for this whole project that started several years ago. And it's, a lot of libraries and towns and, and other facility, other towns have put them in. So, might be time for us to do that.
It's growing big-
Yes.
And bigger every day. People, some of these rocks that are being painted, let me tell you, they're really-
Really?
Works of art. And they take one, they'll leave it somewhere for people to pick up and look at and take back to the garden or add one to the garden, whatever. It's, it's sort of, it's amazing how fast that's taken off and some of the product that comes out of it, so.
Is there any, I think it looks good, but are you going to limit the size it or are you just going to let it grow? We, we were looking at a two foot by four foot piece and there's no cost to the town to do it, so.
So it sits, the rocks sit on what, is that mulch? What is that?
Uh, it can be whatever we decide to put in there. It could be mulch, in this case, I believe it is, in the photograph. But it could be sand, it could be mulch.
So the two foot by four foot, is that going to be delineated? I'm just thinking, those timbers take up a certain amount of space, but rest of it, if somebody walks by there, are they going to trip on the rocks and, and were liable for?
No more than any other place that could trip out of that park.
I, I know, but can we put like a little fence around it or something or something?
We could put warning signs.
I don't know. I, I'm just thinking about that's-
I, I, it's not, I don't think that, I don't think that'd be an issue. I mean, you're talking about a very small parcel, you know?
All right.
Let's put it this way, we'll watch it. If it becomes a problem, we'll deal with that issue.
And it's going to be like, there's a picture here with a, a rock that's got all this words on it. Are you going to put a rock like that there or are you going to put like a sign on the?
Yeah, there'd probably be something along those lines. I mean, it's, it's, there's a group of people that are, have volunteered to do this and they've already collected rocks and painted them and-
Okay.
Taking up space in my house. Let's get a learning, when do you think this might occur? Um, well, depends upon the weather, I guess, but we're probably looking at spring. Then I'll suggest you work autonomous, right, get something in the e-plant. Sometimes that, at least you can say it's coming. I think it'd be nice to maybe put a little picture in there and say, you're going to have a rock garden coming. Get a little history what it's about, so people can read about it and then in the spring. Sound like a great idea?
Okay.
Please move forward.
Yep.
Sound good. Okay, thank you. One other thing that I'd just like to mention that I heard through the grapevine was that you folks were concerned about or had a request to put up signs on the trees for what types of trees they are, like those plaques or so on. We have been looking into that. The only problem that we've run into is that everything that we seem to find can be vandalized very easily. But we are continuing to look into it, but I don't have a solution at this point. Don't they just stick in the ground like these like this?
What do we, what do we have on the American, what is it, elm? What is the delivery tree that's by the library? There's a, the metal thing that sticks everywhere?
It's, it's a dark granite, square granite with small bronze plaque in the granite is-
I don't know, it's just a little park.
Yeah, so the truth, yeah, they, they, they have the little metal stakes that go in but, but the problem is that being in the park, they can be vandalized very easily, so that's, that's a concern.
Don't we have those here at the public safety complex?
Do I see that's going up and down over there?
They've been here for 12 years. Something like that.
Well, how much are they though, like, they can't be that expensive, so?
Well, I haven't looked into cost yet, we're just looking into finding a solution.
Well, maybe if we find something that's inexpensive, so if somebody does deal one.
Are you saying that we have these available?
Yeah, well, they're on the trees over here.
Yeah.
Oh, they're on the trees.
Okay. Might take a look and see what the chief's had. Well, get police protection over there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I guess. Letting deliver it. Thank you.
Oh, select board, the town senate vision committee representative.
Yes, the first thing for the committee is they don't like the name Vision.
Well, that's not my name.
That's not prioritized either. One of the things that came up in the training that we had last Tuesday, was it? I think it was Tuesday. So I spoke to the committee about it and they're interested in moving forward, so I'd like permission from the board to get the TCBC and the department heads and the board of selectmen together to have a conversation about how we roll this out and get the department heads' input.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, you're okay.
I'm fine with it, but if they don't like the term vision, they just want to, what, do they have a suggestion on what they do?
Yes, but I'm not.
Oh, you're not.
Because I'm not, no, 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 I'm not empowered to, for the committee to talk to about that. Because I don't think they've decided.
I see.
No, don't read anything you do.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Lying. The other thing that I was just going to bring up, one of the things we're talking about in terms of, we're going to need some funding, so just, I want to bring up to the board's attention that we're looking at what things potentially could cost. So I just want to give the board a heads up that, that we're going to be asking for money at some point. Shouldn't be tons of money, but we're going to be asking for money. So we're determined that maybe this meeting will be the next one. So I'll bring that back to this group, but I just want to give you a heads up that that's coming to us.
So with respect to the, the meeting, do you have any visions of times?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible?
Yes. So if we can request availability from the department heads.
Is there a meeting time that you pulled together?
Are we talking, I'm assuming we're talking a night meeting?
Or definitely later in the day. I don't know what the, we haven't talked about times, but probably something in the evening.
Right. As soon as I know when the committee wants to do it, we'll start reaching out to everybody.
As soon as possible. We're, we're meeting tomorrow night, so how about if I email and let you know what we're thinking in terms of, but something relatively soon?
Yes.
Because time is waning, so.
Well, normally it's, um, planning boards on Thursdays, but you meet the ABC on Thursday, right?
Um, well, that's almost done before Tuesday.
Yeah.
But the committee meets on Tuesdays, so.
Yeah, but probably good times, right? Okay. Check that your committee and then we'll see what happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we meet before holiday, Christmas time, that's what I'm saying. Absolutely.
I'm out of town all next week, so you proceed without me.
Hey, we, we have to, a short week, isn't it? Christmas is out. We're here on the 26th.
Christmas is not till the last week.
I'm here, I'll come back on the, on the 15th.
Soon.
Oh.
I know.
What?
Don't make it come enough.
What?
Christmas.
You better have your shopping done now.
All right, we'll put together some times, but I think it's a good idea. And how long is the meeting going to try to structure for? I want to keep it contained.
Well, we're going to do some brainstorming, so a decent hour, I would think. Maybe we got more.
I was going to say six to eight or something like that.
That would be fun.
Question, I have a question for Scott. He said our next meeting is tomorrow.
I believe so, is it?
December 11th.
I know it's say the 11th, 19th and then January 3rd.
Oh, okay, never mind.
We'll disregard that.
You are not, some people are not available.
I do have some tomorrow night. Never mind.
I'm not against a meeting, but-
I'm, I'm, every night except Friday, so that's all I know.
Everybody? Anybody else?
I was ready five minutes ago.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Julie Glover, town administration.
So you may recall that for, for, I think it was longer than I've been here, Ben James, the treasurer, has taken the town hall staff out to lunch for Christmas. So we'd like to be able to do that on December 20th this year, which would be closing town hall for about two hours.
Or we should put out notice, we can just wait? Absolutely.
Uh, any questions, gentlemen?
No questions?
You're making a face.
I'm trying to figure out when 20th is.
It's a Wednesday.
I don't have my smartphone with me, so I'm lost.
It's the week before, it's the week before Christmas.
Okay.
So it's a Wednesday. I've got my phone on and off.
That's because you have that clip thing.
I don't carry that either.
As you may recall, we talked about doing air quality testing at town hall because in my opinion, the mold issue is getting worse. So you'll see in the packet, I got an estimate from the loss of group. So, and I would like to fund this out of the contingency fund, for which I need select board approval.
We haven't spent any of it yet, right? And this is just to do the town hall, right?
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we should move forward. Therefore, I move to authorize town administration to enter into a contract with the loss of group for formally air quality testing the town hall, cost not to exceed $3,000, expense to be spent from the contingency fund.
Second.
We have a discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The, I guess we can talk about the transfer station television. We had a request to put meeting notices for the, now I'm going to get it wrong because I wrote TST, the, the vision committee, on the transfer station television. And I just want to talk about that because we don't advertise any other committees or commissions. The original intent for that particular mode of communication was to keep it limited so that people wouldn't become immune to what was ever on the screen. So I'm just checking in with the select board to see what you want to do. I mean, obviously, if there was going to be a meeting where the public, and again, I understand it's a public meeting, but where the public, for example, was specifically invited like we did with the facilities committee a couple of times, that obviously would be something we, we might want to put on there. But I don't know whether you want to put all of the meetings up on that, I'm just, we don't-
Board meetings are up there already, right?
Select board meetings are, but I don't think there's anybody else on there.
In my view, it's a make, to make the public aware of things that are happening, so.
Well, if that's the case, do you want us to start putting everything up there?
Well, how much is stuff? It rotates through how many other things it is, right? So if it's five things, it rotates through five things. And how long do they set up there for?
Um, 15 to 30 seconds? 30, I think I had it at 30 seconds.
I mean, that's the other thing you're trying to capture is people are coming in. They don't have long. The more things that you have, the less likely it is that a person is going to see any one of them.
That makes sense.
Unless they stand there and stare at it, I don't think people do.
Well, the biggest thing is they don't look up.
That's true.
Yeah.
Because I mentioned it to somebody when we first started, I said, do you like the new TV thing up? What, what are you talking about? I said, there's a TV up there. And they've been there like a few times, I never saw it, so.
Well, I assume that what we're trying to do is recruit people for the committee, is that right? Or is it going to be a status type thing? What is it, what is it, the messages are going to?
Just at the committee's meeting?
Just at assigning a meeting?
Yes. One of the things that the TCBC has talked about is putting up information about the buildings on that as well. Is a way to get the information out to people. That's one of the things we talked about, so. I don't think, in terms of the committee's discussion, there's going to be one thing that's going to be the silver bullet, it's going to solve our problem, it's going to have to be multiple things, getting it out in multiple different ways to people so that we touch as many people as possible with those particular messages.
I agree, but when you watch people come into the transfer station, very, very, very few of them, they go to the wall, they throw their stuff over the wall, turn around and go back to the car. Very few of them look at that TV monitor, much less digest anything off of it as it ages through, so. You know, if, if they feel this, this, you know, one message up there, they'll flash up there for 15, 20 seconds. And I, I think that's fine. And if we want to put other committee things up there, I don't, I don't see any reason why not. It's just I don't think there's much bang for the buck coming off of that, coming off of that screen, to be honest with you, as far as getting the word out.
It's just a mechanism to let people know what's going on.
Yeah.
And plus, if you go there with your spouse and you get stuck taking the trash out, the spouse can sit there and look at it and then tell you all the things that you missed.
Well, that's true, but I got to tell you, that just doesn't happen.
Well, maybe not in the ground house.
Well, maybe, okay, that's fine. Hey, if you and the family go to the transfer station, watch TV, that's okay. I mean, I'm just saying, I don't think a lot of people spend time looking at that monitor to, to get anything off of it. So it would have to be the right message at the right time when they look at it.
A question for Denise, don't you have control in a software? You can make it longer than 15 seconds, can't you?
Yes.
Yes.
I can, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest if you make it longer, then you want less slides.
Right.
Because if you want one slide or two slides and that's all you're going to have for a longer period of time, okay, because like you said, like you understand, people aren't, they're going to look up there, if they do look up there and see one slide or two slides. They're not going to stand there for four, five, six slides.
I know, I don't either.
So that's why we try to put the most, like the tree light, boom, and the, and the, me, I mean, I put the meetings up there one week because I needed something to put up there. So I put the slipper meeting, I started putting the slipper meetings up there.
I guess it, my opinion at this time is that, let's go ahead and put this TV, CV, whatever it is, up there as an answer on the board of selectmen. I'm not out, you know, asking that we do anything else at this time. If anybody else is interested in having them come to us, we can ask at this point. I don't want to start a floodgate either, because I don't think it's working out. But Sid, I think Scott's right, we're trying to push this, so let's see what happens. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Chief, chief would like to be back. Chief, somebody that came up today and talked this looking buggly about it. A gentleman, Professor Robin Collins.
Yes.
Came in and he wanted to borrow our Desol Reader. Said that he's borrowed it in the past, said that he was a member of the Brace Track Committee, which I was on that, I don't remember him being there. He says he's borrowed it in the past, I don't ever remember that. He wanted it for a project at UNH. My concern is that, you know, we pay, we have that calibrated specific to use to monitor the noise for the ordinance. How do I know if something happened to it while he has it for whatever he's using it for and we get it back and it's now not monitoring correctly, I don't know that. And it's, he's not a resident that I can see, he's not on the resident list. I just, I had concerns about it, it's the town's meter, not mine, so I didn't know. It's the first I've heard of it and since I've been here, I don't remember him borrowing it. It's for a private function, it's for a project that he's doing.
Is he measuring a neighbor's noise?
Yeah. He made, he led me to believe it's a UNH project, so my thing is, UNH must have a-
Yeah, he made, he led me to believe it's a UNH project, so my thing is, UNH must have a decimal meter somewhere over there. I seem to remember something a long time ago, early on with the committees, but he's no longer part of the program at this time, so my answer would say no. You can make the call, but I think...
Yeah, I'll call, I'll call, that was my feeling.
Yes.
But it's not my meter, so.
I understand, but as you said, we pay for the calibration and everything else and if you're going to deal with legal issues because of a summary, I wanna make sure we can defend it a courtful.
Yeah, I think the only way you could do it is if he agreed to pay for having it recalibrated after he turned it in.
Whether to consider that or not, how do we say no to the next person that comes to the board?
Can I borrow a cruiser?
I was just thinking that. Because we don't lend out town equipment to people to use for...
No.
So... No, Tim, I use your razor.
The answer is we don't loan out some of it. Thank you.
This is probably the most exciting board meeting we've had in a while.
Thank you. Anybody else, seeing hands go up? I move to accept that consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
What's the status of the sidewalk now, we sent a letter?
We sent the letter.
But we haven't heard back from DOT yet.
Oh, no.
But the indication was that Dr. Morse would pay for it if they don't...
No.
No, he's not gonna pay for it?
No, Dr. Morse thinks we're splitting the cost.
I don't remember that.
That's what we discussed.
I thought he said he was gonna do it.
No, I think he said we're gonna share the cost. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, no, what I do is, I remember, it was, we left it, we split the cost.
Either way, we're paying for it, so.
Yeah, no matter what happens, it's the same. Get your pen. You have the same as... Just draw the Dallas.
Hold on.
Item nine, I move to enter a non-public session of Hampshire RSA 91-8, poll 311. Two personnel issues, A, purchase of church property, D, and legal, E. Second, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, yes, motion first.
We have to reject this, nobody says it's a...
Second, report.
Well, that'll be fun.
I move to seal two of the non-public sessions discussions.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Bugby.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. LaCarce, yes.
Do you have any interest in giving a very brief summary of the two that you're, wait, one, two, three, four, the two that you're not sealing?
The one that I'm not sealing is that the Board of Selectmen decided not to accept the offer from the church property at this time. So this one's not sealed, the one with the folded edges, dog ears are sealed. Okay.
Yes, there were four.
Three, there are three.
Four, there were four, I was discussing.
Oh. The legal is sealed.
Yeah.
The two personnel are sealed, oh.
Yeah, well, was it really a sec, wasn't an issue though.
Okay. So there was only one personnel?
Yeah, really one personnel.
Okay.
Okay, miscellaneous business. First order of business, I'd like to nominate Mr. Bugby to choose the, I'd like to figure it out, volunteer of the year.
Yes.
Yes.
In the...
Black tie and chief award.
Yes. And...
To spend up to $100.
Second.
Discussion. I'm looking at you. Hearing the discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. This is the subject that Selectman Brown will be filing in anyone.
Any other miscellaneous unfinished business?
Another middle school meeting this Thursday, I think, unless my scheduler has got some...
Yeah, the schedule is on you.
We're going to be ranking the middle school options, A through M, I think it is. So we're doing the first one, so we're gonna create that same group that we created with Mr. Godano, so the start of the process.
Mr. Brown, you got it?
No. Volunteer thing on Wednesday, are you coming?
Volunteer thing on Wednesday?
Yes, the volunteer party?
The dinner.
The dinner.
I don't know, nobody, is there, is there tickets available?
Yes, you just have to tell me.
Yes.
Well, for a while, I didn't do it because there was no tickets available.
Well, you're not an employee, you're a volunteer, you're a volunteer, you can go no matter what.
Yes. The reason I'm asking is because last year I did it because it was 250th, so if you'd like, the honor is yours to be the master of ceremonies kind of thing, if you'd like to do that.
This is kind of thrilling, yeah. Wednesday night?
Wednesday night.
Six to...
We knew this couple, 6:30 at the Grange, right?
Six to nine.
I'm breaking an email.
Six to nine at the Grange.
Six to nine at the Grange.
Put you down for two, you down for two.
Yep.
You have got your...
So the police department does that presentation, so the chief will do that. Fire department is not coming, some of their volunteers might come, but there's no fire presentations and then you'll do the R award, so if you wanna do the presentation, you've got the information in terms of nominations for those, so you can work up yourself a little spiel to...
A little spiel.
Also, can you alert the gentleman and the recipient for today's email? Bill?
Yeah, I did.
But can you tell him that he should have her attend?
Sure, yeah.
So what did you win, by guessing correctly?
Oh, nothing, just monetary, just the glory, being right or something.
Anything else, Town Administration? Denise?
Nope.
Move to her turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.